When I retired from office, I know the amount of work that goes into it. At some point, the Franklin Park Police Department started reviewing the standards. We have one hundred and thirty-nine standards. They're basically best practices in providing professional police services to the customers, whether it be the residents, people we arrest, people we interact with, they're all our customers. They need to be treated professionally. And at some point, your police department started taking a look at their existing policies, lining them up with the accreditation standards, making changes, creating new policy where they didn't have policy that addressed those standards. And when I talk about the one hundred and thirty-nine accreditation standard, it's sort of a misnomer as far as the number. Because if you really take a hard look at the one hundred and thirty-nine standards, a lot of them are bulleted out. They're basically embedded within the standard for a lot of other standards. When you add them all up, this certificate represents three hundred and seventy best practices in providing professional police services to the customers that the Franklin Park Police Department provides services to. So it's one thing to have a good policy manual covering all the areas of policing. But the other component of the accreditation process is we require for each of those best practices two proofs of compliance. If employees are not following a policy manual, that policy manual isn't doing anybody any good. So part of our process is for every one of those three hundred and seventy best practices, there had to be two proofs of compliance. They had to show our accreditation assessors two times where employees actually followed those policies. Once they felt that they were ready, then they run through what's called a dress rehearsal, it's a mock assessment. After the mock assessment's over, they tweak their policies and then notify my office. And we send three trained assessors into Franklin Park to spend two days here on site, looking through the entire policy manual, lining up, making sure that all of those three hundred and seventy best practices actually have policy that is spot on them, also making sure that they have the appropriate proofs of compliance. They think that was hard work. Well, it's just as hard to keep the accreditation process. As I mentioned, this is not a sticker for life. They're accredited for three years annually. They have to do a self-assessment, a very lengthy report sent in my office that gets reviewed, basically self-attesting that they're in full compliance with all those three hundred and seventy best practices. Then three years from their anniversary date of this first assessment, we'll be sending a fresh team of assessors here with them through the entire process again. And when I said about the two proofs of compliance, that's for each of the twelve months within that three-year cycle. So it's a lot of work keeping up with it. Sometimes I get asked, what's the benefit of being accredited? Well, the one thing is the insurance industries are starting to recognize the fact that when you compare accredited police departments against non-accredited police departments of similar size, the accredited police departments are getting sued less often, significantly and statistically less often. The other statistic the insurance companies are seeing is that when an accredited police department or municipality does in fact get sued and has to pay out compared to the non-accredited municipalities, the accredited municipalities' payouts are significantly less. So by virtue of going through the accreditation process, your police department is doing risk management and minimizing liability for your municipality. I don't know whether your insurance company has been notified, but they should be notified if you have an accredited police department, and I would hope that they would recognize that. The other piece that it does too, and this is a little bit outdated, but I still think it's a relevant example. Unfortunately, I'm sure most of us remember the George Floyd incident. Well, shortly thereafter, eight of our state legislators came out with the eight can't wait law enforcement initiatives. Eight can't wait initiatives that they felt all police departments need to adopt immediately. Well, guess what? Accredited police departments already had all of those eight can't wait initiatives embedded in their policy manual by virtue of accreditation. Fast forward, we've had a couple credentialing executive orders from the President. Trump's first term, he came out with a credentialing order that basically said, if you want Department of Justice funding, you have to meet these two credentialing standards. Well, again, I think you know where I'm headed. All accredited agencies already had those two credentialing standards in place. Then under the Biden administration, they updated the credentialing standards for twenty mandatory credentialing standards. And if you wanted to apply for Department of Justice money, you had to have these twenty credentialing standards in place. Well, again, if you were accredited, those twenty credentialing standards were already in place. And I can go on with some other examples, but it does keep your police department ahead of the curve. It requires them to constantly be reevaluating their policy manual. A policy manual should not be stagnant. It should be a living, breathing document. And so the other thing I want to add real quickly is we have, depending on what they count, about eleven hundred police departments in Pennsylvania. Right now, as I stand here, we have one hundred and ninety-two of them accredited. About eighteen percent, your police department is in that eighteen percent of the accredited police departments in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I guess it's quite an accomplishment. I could stand up here all evening long, talk about accreditation, very passionate about it. But seriously, anybody that's listening, if you want to learn more about accreditation, you can go to the public-facing webpage, Pennsylvania Chiefs, just Google P A Chiefs, the webpage should come up. P A Chiefs dot org. There's an accreditation tab. And all those one hundred and thirty-nine standards and three hundred and seventy best practices are all there. There's a lot of information. But if you have any questions about accreditation, you've got a couple resident experts in-house. Your chief, lieutenant, and the officers that help get you there. So without any further ado, I'd like to publicly present to the chief, the mayor, the council, because you have to have the support of the executive officials to be top president. And there's no doubt in my mind that your police team is supported by you, the elected officials, and the mayor. So chief, give you the mic before I keep talking.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Actually, I'm gonna let you guys have it. It's true.
So I prepared a few words that I'd like to say. So I'm honored to say this on behalf of Franklin Park, this one, the community council and the mayor. It's over a decade of hard work, a belief and a mission for a professional police. I want to thank you both for coming all the way out here, sending us with this. It means a lot. And on a broader note, I want to thank the P A Chiefs Association. Had some insight into all the hard work they do, the people you work with, the board, association. It's a testament to the humility professionalism, accountability, forward-thinking leadership across the Commonwealth. We're very proud of you. To the members of the community, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for your trust, your partnership. It means a great deal to our department. To the Borough Council, the mayor, Civil Service Commission, I want to thank you for your unwavering support, for believing in our mission, and for always recognizing the value of highest standard and loyalty. This process began, like I said, ten-plus years ago. The original architects of this, of our accreditation process are Chief Doris, Chief Haley, Lieutenant Snyder, and Mayor O'Keefe. They had a vision, the foresight to understand the importance of holding our department to the highest professional standard. And I'll be remiss if I did not point out Lieutenant Snyder, he is the workforce behind our accreditation. His attention to detail, his depth of knowledge, his dedication to the integrity of the operations is unmatched. I often call him the historian. I'm pretty sure he remembers everything about the community and about the police. This will also mark a significant milestone today. Franklin Park is the first police department among the North Hills communities to achieve accredited status. It's something we're proud of, not for the recognition alone, but because it reflects our ongoing commitment to setting a higher bar in service. For the officers, this plaque is more than a symbol, it's a testament to the professionalism of every officer in this department. Their drive to serve at the highest level made this process smoother. It's my honor to accept the recognition on behalf of the police department, and we will continue to live up to the standards this plaque represents every day. Thank you.
Oh, well, nice turnout. Thank you all for coming. This is a really important thing for us tonight, and you have already heard from the talks we've given tonight. But I also want to thank Chief Jim Adams, or Adam Jim Adams, I'm sorry, and the association for the support and leadership that you've provided on all of our department. I'm very proud of Franklin Park Police. Thank you for being here tonight too also. Always good to see all of you. And they dedicated a lot of years back there too, good to see you, into this process. And ten years is just about what it was. And now we have this very prestigious standing within our community. We're so proud, so proud. Thank you for all the work that you've done, thanks for our gallows. This accreditation recognizes our department for an unwavering commitment to excellence. And I see that excellence every day when I visit the police department. They're always professional, always, always nice to be with. I'm so proud of them in every aspect, in every aspect of the police work that they do. They're so professional. I always enjoy my visits over to everyone and maybe have an occasional lunch sit-down too, always good to chat. I'm just actually very honored to serve as mayor. Thank you for that honor. I'm just really delighted to serve and do what I do as mayor. Also, I had a message today from County Councilwoman Suzanne Piliotti. Suzanne is actually out of town. Far out of town, it's not even close. And she's very proud of all the accomplishments here today, that we can celebrate it. And she asked me to share her...
Welcome back, everyone. We're trying to go to the regular meeting now. Sorry about the final lighting. I think that's more... All right, so, official floor, we're going to address the input to that. Let's see, public comments. Resident, expert of the borough permitted to comment fair matters of concern or agenda items. We'd like to address our council's evening. If you'd like to address your own council's evening, please stand at the microphone, give your name, spell your last name, give your name and address. If you're properly identified with your record, excuse us for your five minutes, as alternative for any comments to be submitted, public comments have to be part of our rundown. Yes, prior to that, so, if you need your time on Wednesday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, in order to consider the meeting, please include July sixteenth. Both comments, Subirino, and include your name and address, if you're properly identified with your record. Okay, are there any public comments speakers?
Anybody signed up?
No. Okay, anyone signed up? No one's come up? All right, monthly reports. Let's see, the minutes of the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, three post-meeting, and June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting, July second, twenty twenty-five. Where session minutes were given, mayor and councilor, there are additional corrections, seeing as errors are known. Motion number one.
Move the minutes of the June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, three post-meeting, the June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, regular meeting, and the July second, two thousand twenty-five, all session minutes be approved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? opposed? Dave, Mr. Carries. Traders, any more for it?
Mr. President, general fund revenues for the first six months of this year total approximately six million, three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, which is about forty-five percent of our total budget year-to-date. June is the month where we collect the majority of our real estate tax. We've been taking over two million dollars in real estate tax. General fund expenditures for the first six months total approximately four million, five hundred thousand dollars, which is about thirty percent of our total budget for the year. That is my report.
Uh, motion number two.
Move the June and Travis's community for the X F three, please.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Against Dave, Mr. Carries. Police report.
Yes, just working. Thank you, Mr. President. For the month of June, our Franklin Park Police had four hundred and thirty-nine calls for service, resulting in seventeen arrests, two DUI, one disorderly conduct, two harassment, one retail theft, one stalking, one receiving stolen property, one PFA violation, one illegal possession of firearms, two drugs, one forged documents, one hit-and-run, one warrant. We issued sixty-six citations and one hundred and forty-eight warnings. There was no CSRT call-outs. We are very proud to accomplish the accreditation. This milestone reflects our department's continued pursuit of excellence in public service. During June, officers accomplished one hundred and forty-nine hours of training. And this completes the police report, Mr. President.
Recommend the police report be filed with the police secretary.
Uh, fire report.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the month of June, the fire company responded to one hundred, I'm sorry. I actually didn't say it.
I think it was twenty-four.
Okay. The fire company responded to twenty-four calls, including seven dispatches canceled and round, three assist police or other agency, three alarm system activations, three vehicle accidents, three power lines down, two no incidents found, two severe weather lightning strikes, one smoke scare or odor of smoke, one good intent call. We assisted other fire companies seven times and were assisted by other fire companies once. Year-to-date fire calls are one hundred and seventy-two. For the month of June, the company expended six hundred and twenty-six volunteer man-hours. And for the past twelve months, the company has expended seven thousand forty-six volunteer man-hours. End of report, Mr. President.
Building inspector's report.
Construction report for June twenty twenty-five. Thirty permits were issued for the month. Two were single-family dwellings, two remodels, eight decks, three fences, three suncoats, two sheds, one commercial, one demolition, eight miscellaneous permits. Total value of construction for the month was one million eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Total fees collected for the month were twenty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. End of report, Mr. President.
Okay. Announcement of executive session. Borough Council, having the session July seventh, to discuss police personnel, and since earlier tonight, to discuss potential litigation. Old business, none, on the initiative, motion number three.
Move council authorize the payment of the bills which have been reviewed and approved since the last meeting and available for viewing on the borough website.
Any discussion? All in favor? Against Dave, Mr. Carries. Mr. Crummer, would you summarize ordinance numbers six nine three dash twenty twenty-five?
Certainly. This is ordinance number six nine three of twenty twenty-five, is an ordinance of the borough of Franklin Park, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, to place a government study commission question on the ballot for the twenty twenty-five general election. Mr. Crummer, has this been advertised for potential action this evening?
Yes, it has.
Move to enact ordinance number six nine three dash twenty twenty-five to place government study commission question on the ballot for the twenty twenty-five general election to allow voters in Franklin Park to determine whether government study commission should be formed to study the existing form of government and consider the advisability of adopting a home rule charter, and if deemed advisable, to draft and recommend a home rule charter.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As we make this important, take the important step on this vote, I think the council here has worked really diligently to try to communicate what this home rule charter, or why it's being done, and what we hope to accomplish from it, which in my personal mind is an increase in revenue to fund the many things for the borough. But I think more importantly, it was a way to increase revenue without directly increasing taxes on the residents. In the last month or so, I've had communication with, I'm gonna say upwards of two dozen constituents, neighbors, and residents. And what I'm finding is we either did a very poor job with this, because even though I personally think that it's got some merit to let the commission work through and see what they can come up with, virtually everybody I spoke to was actually opposed to it. So even though I do have reservations about voting no on it, on a personal level, I feel that I represent, the people that I represent as a councilman are virtually ninety-five percent against it. So unfortunately, I'm gonna have to vote no as I represent them, even though I still think that there's an opportunity to look for revenue sources in other ways. So I just wanted to put that into the record before we take the vote.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schwartzmeyer. Anyone else?
Yeah, like Mr. Schwartzmeyer, I'm just, we've talked about this a lot, and there are some pros for sure. But like him, it's been overwhelmingly negative response from everyone that I've talked to. Not many issues in the six years that I've been here garnered that kind of response from the residents, let alone such a one-sided response. So I'll...
Anyone else?
Yes, I've also spoken with lots of residents, like my colleagues. I've had sort of the opposite experience, folks have come to me with questions or concerns, and once we have a discussion and talk through it, I feel like I've been in large part have been able to put those concerns to rest, partially because this issue is not voted on just by council. As we've talked about here, it's a long process. All we're doing tonight is voting on the ballot to have voters decide whether they want to move forward with this. So with that in mind, based on the conversations I've had with constituents and residents of Franklin Park, and knowing that this is not a final word tonight, residents certainly will have many opportunities throughout this process to weigh in and continue. For that reason, I'm gonna support this tonight.
Yeah, and I also would like to say that because this and the whole borough council has spent a lot of time and trying to deal with the financial problem we are facing right now, you know, and so right now. So we have, like, probably most likely, we have two options, either to raise tax or bring like more venue and to the borough. So what I'm saying that day and the way the whole borough council is open to like, to any, you know, and suggestions or ideas how to like deal with physical, you know, issue. And I want to emphasize again and again, I'm not here to raise tax. And started day one that I became like the borough councilman, even before I got elected. And some people say something about me that they, John, and it's going to raise tax and very soon or something. But what I can tell you that they, to raise the tax this year, is just, is, you know, and is a solution, is a method to deal with that, you know, and all this situation. And at the beginning, I want to vote against this one. And because for me, I don't like to raise the tax, and I want to save money. I don't want to pay that much, you know, and for the service. But to keep that the borough, you know, working and to provide service, the best service to our constituents and those residents. And sometimes we have to make difficult decisions. So I don't know, and there are so many, you know, false information, you know, and about this home rule chart. But it's and, and Nora mentioned that, so this is just to ask, to allow the voters to determine whether that's, you know, and we should, you know, and what a government study commission should be formed. So this is kind of like first step, first step, and this whole process will take a few years. So we don't know and what will happen. But so far, I think that this is, this is believed to be the best approach that we can, we can try to help like, you know, solve the financial problem and also to maintain the best service of our borough. So what I can definitely tell you is that I don't like to raise tax and because I don't want to pay a lot of money because I still have kids to support. So whatever, you know, and the information, you know, and false information and, you know, about me or about like, you know, our borough council, and I have to say like, please, if you have any question, come to us and ask. So if you have a bad approach or bad solution, just come to us. And we would like to try, we would like to and use your method or your solution to solve that the issue. So this is something that I want to let over, I know, and the borough know that. And I'm not here just like it to do something like it can hurt like the constituent or residents because I've been living here like for how many years? Fifteen years. I love this community. I want to keep, like, the community or community best, somehow we have to pay for that service. So if you guys have a better option, better solution, you know, tell me and show me, I would like to, you know, do it, if it's better than, than this home rule chart or something. So this is what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Just a few comments, Mr. President. I think we spent quite a lot of time as council looking at the issue of whether or not this idea of a home rule charter has any merit or offers any solutions to long-term financial problems that we conceive being forecast. I mean, as of last year, we, we had enough of a shortfall that we had to raise taxes on everybody in the borough. And I would imagine that unless something happens, based upon our projections for costs, and those are things that are fixed costs, like the, the money it costs to pay for our services, like our police force and to pay for the fire company and to pay for an ambulance service, all those services cost a lot of money, and in order to keep those up, you have to keep paying, and the cost rises. So we're not gonna be able to sit here and do nothing, uh, and at least, from based upon all the information that everybody on council has, has received, the idea of the home rule charter and what it offers in flexibility for, um, revenue streams and for self-governance by the community are things that we should at least, uh, bring to our residents', um, attention and give them the opportunity to at least determine whether or not they think a home rules charter is a good idea or not. And if we don't at least vote yes here today for the possibility of investigation of the home rule charter and commission, then I think we're failing the residents. And I heard that there are people that heard from their constituents to have negative comments, but this is a big borough, and if I add up all of the, um, the, so far, the information that our council people have received from the folks that are, uh, against it, it's a very small, small fraction of the entire borough. So either we're missing a lot of the borough, or there are people that are trusting us to make decisions and bring those decisions to them for, for voting. And because I think that this home rule charter has been studied, the idea of at least, um, studying it, has been reviewed by every person on council, we've spent a lot of time on this, I think we would be failing the residents if we didn't at least give them the opportunity to vote on the possibility. So for that reason, I'm gonna vote yes.
Okay. Uh, anyone else? I don't.
Yes, um, we have the votes not done, so I don't know whether it's gonna come my way or not, but, um, I've been through all the, uh, sessions where we've talked in-depth about this, and I'm still convinced that this is the way we want to go as a borough. I think there's still some unanswered questions as far as each commission, how they get set up, and how things work on future commissions, and also the costs involved in, in this process of, uh, of, uh, so I'm just not convinced, so if, if, if it would come to me for my vote, that would be a no right this moment.
Okay, um, I'm just gonna comment that I am gonna support this after doing a lot of research, we've spoken to other mayors, other communities, why they do it, when they do it, um, there's a reason why the Canalis and Pine did this a long time ago. They are in much stronger financial positions than we are, um, they have flexibility, we are limited literally to just property taxes as our revenue source. That is the only thing that we can modify. There are a lot of fixed expenses, uh, including a top-notch police force, building expenses, staff, those are not things you can automatically just cut. We've been funding our budget for the, budget for the last decade, like, seven out of ten years by using up our reserves. Our reserves are pretty much at the bare minimum or even below. We can't just continue pushing stuff off. Uh, we are paving like a third of what we should be paving, our paving's going behind just a lot of expenses that are filing up. Whether they're made or not, these are things that residents expect. For that reason, I'm willing to explore, uh, the home rule. Ms. Crummer, create a roll call vote.
Yes. One second here. Okay. Ms. Chekai?
Yes.
Dr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Malkin?
Yes.
Mr. Mizlinsky?
No.
Mr. Pallad?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzmeyer?
No.
Is it you have four yes, two no votes?
Okay, St. Lucchieri's. Uh, motion number five.
Move to purchase one new Cushman truck, X D utility vehicle for Cloverhill Golf Course from Baker Vehicle Systems of Macedonia, Ohio, under Omnia Partners contract number R two one zero two zero one, at a cost of thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Second. Any discussion?
I would just clarify that that amount was thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Yes.
Yes.
Agreed.
Um, any discussion? Okay, um, all in favor? Against?
Oh, okay.
Move to pre, purchase one new Cushman truck, X D utility vehicle for the park, pardon, for Baker Vehicle System, uh, Macedonia and Ohio, under Omnia Partner Contract Number R two one zero two zero one, at a cost of thirty-nine hundred and, uh, thirty-nine thousand and eight hundred and seventy-five.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Against? St. Lucchieri's.
Move the borough enter into a snow and ice agreement with Allegheny County for the winter season of twenty twenty-five slash twenty-six, twenty-six, to a twenty twenty-six slash twenty twenty-seven, and twenty twenty-seven slash twenty twenty-eight.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Against? St. Lucchieri's.
Move to authorize the, for, given an amount of ninety-four thousand and four hundred and sixty-eight dollars, twenty-five cents as part, cents as part of the two thousand twenty-five annual donation to the Northland Network.
Second.
Any discussion? For? Against? St. Lucchieri's.
Move to authorize the payment in the amount of one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to the Franklin Park Volunteer Fire Company, number one, for the purchase and upsetting of a used Ford F-550 rescue truck reused by the fire police.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? St. Lucchieri's.
Move to enter into a third addendum to development agreement with Deerfield Estates FP Development LLC for the development and construction of the Deerfield Estates Plan Lots Number One, to extend the completion period until July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-six, and to release the set aside agreement and place it with subdivision bond in the amount of seven hundred and three thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Against? St. Lucchieri's.
Move to authorize the borough secretary to advertise for bids for contract number twenty-five PK two, Blueberry Hill Roof Replacement.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Against? St. Lucchieri's. Ms. Crummer, would you summarize the resolution number thirteen eighty-eight dash twenty-five?
Certainly, this is resolution number thirteen eighty-eight of twenty twenty-five, is a resolution of the Borough Council of the Borough of Franklin Park, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, approving that the acquisition and subsequent disposition of a parcel of vacant property known as block and lot number seven twelve dash N dash twenty-eight would be in accord with the Borough of Franklin Park Comprehensive Plan.
Move to adopt resolution number thirteen eighty-eight of twenty twenty-five, approving the acquisition and subsequent disposition of a parcel of vacant property known as block and lot number seven twelve dash M dash twenty-eight, located at fifteen twenty-one King John Drive, but be in accord with the Borough of Franklin Park Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? St. Lucchieri's.
Move to accept for both of our MS four program B M P implementation, dated May seventh, two thousand twenty-five, and the environmental consultant, Inc., appoint a stormwater engineer for the foreign estimated amount of one hundred and fifty thousand.
Any discussion? All in favor? Against? St. Lucchieri's.
Move to reapprove subdivision application number SF dash twenty-five dash zero one dash zero one, submitted by LaTerra Holdings LLC for the Cardinal Ridge Plan at twenty-six Latan House Subdivision, located at twenty-five seventy Alton Drive in the M two zoning district, with all the conditions as set forth when the application was originally granted approval on April sixteenth of twenty twenty-five.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Against? St. Lucchieri's.
Move to enter into engagement letter with Akershur Bittletland Partners Insurance Services LLC to provide actuarial services for the borough's pension plans for the annual fee of eleven thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars for fiscal years twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. Any form acceptable to the solicitor?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Against? St. Lucchieri's. Uh, conclude your agenda. Uh, let's see, comments, uh, chief?
Not so much.
Um, I, I just want to again thank, uh, the mayor and council, I really appreciate the support. Always feel like you forget people, and so I apologize, but I also wanted to thank, uh, the borough's staff as well, and, and the time borough managers, I appreciate having you guys, the leadership of this department and the support they give us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say congratulations for your accreditation for the police department. That's all I have.
No additional reports, Mr. President?
Yeah, for the conference.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Chief and the, uh, police department. You guys have done a wonderful job. Thank you.
Yes, thanks. I'd like to congratulate the, the chief of the police department, obviously, and also like to thank the recreation for a wonderful festival. Uh, I know they all too belong, so thank each all the staff that assisted on that as well, uh, and, and welcome Zach, uh, Phylis, uh, it's great to have, and looking forward to the future here.
First off, I'd like to thank the chief, uh, congratulate the chief on his fine work. I wasn't here for the graduations, I look forward to working here in the future. I'd like to thank council for giving me the opportunity to serve this community, and I look forward to being here in the future.
Yeah, congratulations to the chief and the police department, and also welcome Zach.
It was a night of celebration for all the achievements with the police department, a lot of work, and, um, so proud of everything, and I also want to thank everyone who, uh, who came tonight to help us celebrate that wonderful, the evening, pool house tonight, so, uh, we're leaving.
Uh, scholarship golf outing spots are still available, that is next Monday, the twenty-eighth, up at Cranberry Highlands, and also Night Out will be Tuesday, August fifth, so both of those coming up here quickly.
No comment.
Yeah, so, um, first of all, welcome Zach, uh, sort of borough manager, um, it's gonna take two weeks, Reach, congrats on being our transitioning secretary and vice director for Trejo. Chief, congrats on the police accreditation, being part of the eighteen percent club of Pennsylvania, and the only one in North Hills. It's an honor to have that here at Franklin Park. Let's see, also wanna, I actually want to thank, uh, Chief and the police department on for your situation, um, helping, coordinating, letting the police on a missing child issue, uh, the results have come as positive, uh, this week have a wonderful and, you know, well-run police force that can actually set up to be in help. Uh, and then finally, just wanted to congratulate a, uh, community revised team, they, they represented, uh, Pennsylvania and the United States at the World Championships in, uh, Cadillons, and they won. So, there's a lot of, some stuff going on for this week, uh, it's just a kind of, but thanks everyone for coming out, sorry about the air outage, um, we're all back, can you go? Do we, all our Zooms off, but, uh, do we have any public comments from the public that's in person here? Okay, if not, uh, can I get a motion signature?
So.
It's okay? Sure. Thank you, everyone.